Now, one of the meeting, we need to adopt a agenda, motion to adopt an agenda, so the second. Let me change this for additions to the agenda.
No.
All is in favor of the agenda as presented.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no recommendations this evening, so we have public comment for anything not on our agenda. Is there anyone in the public to comment? We have reports and our first report is from our super.
First off, President Baker is at the conclusion of my report.
Yes.
Thank you. Over the past few weeks of school, there has been a positive change to school culture. ASB has worked to increase school spirit at football games, which LVHS seemed to lack prior. Feedback from both students and parents on the school culture has been mostly positive. ASB has been following a theme of leadership this month, giving permission for others to be great, which has been displayed on and off campus. Club Rush was held last Friday at lunch. All students were given the opportunity to join some of the fifty-plus clubs on campus, ranging from community service groups to carry a VEP. Homecoming preparations are at a full swing and the homecoming court will be announced this Friday. Our MEPA assembly will be held at the end of the day Wednesday, October eleventh, following school-wide practice testing. Freshmen and juniors will be taking the P S A T and sophomores will be taking the pre-grads. On behalf of Athletic Director, Mr. Neal, Breaker Athletics are off to a great start. The dance team has been added to perform during football games and dance to play music played live by the band. The Friday night games have been something for all to look forward to and students to actively participate in. Our game of the week is varsity volleyball versus saddleback Thursday at five fifteen home. All are encouraged to attend. This coming Friday morning, our first athletic leadership meeting will be held and is welcome to all students interested in joining.
Thank you. So, there's being the bottom.
For homecoming, it's Rome.
Rome.
Rome coming.
Rome coming.
Oh, I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We have been putting into action the evaluation process or the teacher evaluation process and teachers have been dealing with their administrators and we're all going through the process and trying to understand it and as we work through each step and presently, we are all developing our goals, which are due here coming up soon in October. And we will continue to have a collaborative evaluation committee that will be to monitor and support the process along the way and as we continue to implement. We also will be participating in calendar committee and along with teachers and administration to begin meeting next month and discuss future calendars beginning the year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Independent study committee is forming and the purpose to address the academic needs of students who are out for lengthy periods of time and how teachers can best support those students. We have a couple new site reps. Rep Bond at TOW is from serving her second year and Stacy Kearty is new at Thurston Middle School. Ian Corso is Almaro and Steve Bocha is at High School. And so far, the high school and elementary schools back to school night have gone well. They've been well attended. Thurston Middle School is coming up this Thursday and we have an amazing group of teachers and who do incredible things in our classroom as you just saw here in your boardroom and you see when you attend our back to school nights on the campus. So, we do appreciate your presence on our campus and look forward to seeing guys around and particularly at our back to school nights, so thank you. Thank you.
And Mrs. Barker used to do this a while back and so I thought maybe I'd try it this year, but I only got one response so far, to ask the site reps at each school to please let me know about things that are going on on their campus so that, you know, we can give a more thorough report. And the only person that gave me a report was Elizabeth Phillips and on Thurston, they had their first fire drill today and everything went well. The sixth graders are getting ready to leave for the Catalina Science Camp next Tuesday morning and of course, that requires all kinds of preparation and forms and things that are needed for that trip, as anyone that's experienced it knows. October at Thurston is celebrating uniting in kindness and being up standard. A separate note, Elizabeth reported that the health clerks are having their first school year PLC tomorrow, nine twenty-seven, and it will be attended with IT to further explore areas and understand more the ways that they can use areas with the flagging of their medicines and things like that that they're using. Personally, on the note, I'd like to thank Dr. Adipo and her group for including the instructional assistants as the professional development programs being rolled out tomorrow, being the first program. I again cannot say how much people really appreciate being included and that's something that, you know, I just know means so much more because they can help in the classroom and assist the teachers working with them so that everybody's on the same page. And on another note, our survey is going out hopefully by the end of this week and you know that we really do look at our survey. There's a lot of planning that goes into the questions. We are going to make it as anonymous as possible because we're not going to ask what their job is, we're not going to ask what site they're at so that hopefully people can just, and we're going to have it like degrees, you know, number one to five, so it's rather straightforward. So, we can really use that as we move forward in our plannings for the year. And as I mentioned last time, on December fifth, we will be going to the Orange Field office for more preparation and understanding. And not that I feel that we, as you know how I feel, we don't really feel that we have a need to learn tricks and I'll use that word because I've mentioned that even at our roundtable. We have a collaborative effort. We put on the table what we believe, what we would like to see and work together for what's the best interest of the district and the classified staff. Reminder again, boot rams will be started the first week in October. At the high school, they don't do the boot rams, but certainly you can purchase them from other sites because they'll do their chili in the spring, all those tacos or whatever they choose to do. From a TOW point, of course, the modular buildings are creating quite a bit of interest up there on the ramp in the morning. All the children are coming and looking and the parents are driving up the ramp and looking at units with the cranes. So, I'm glad to see that that's kind of settled in now. As of today, it looks like they're almost all in the right place. So, that's been very exciting. It's really, you know, when you talk about citizenry, the kids are learning right there. How does this happen? You know, and like they keep saying, are we going to be in there next week? I said, I don't think so. What happens, what has to happen? You know, well, they've got to have the wiring and they've got to have the internet and they've got to have the sanitary, you know, all of that has to happen. Oh, so what do you think? I said, January. So, it's good learning, it's an onsite learning experience for them. And I want to commend the safety when the students are there and for the staff, it's been, thank to Mr. Collin. It's really like the crane was coming and, you know, move the cars and make sure everything is safe and that's really, you know, I'm sure goes to Mr. Diggs and then to, right? That if you're really concerned about what's happening on the site, it's really important. And another thing, as far as assessments, as we've looked at the benchmark assessments and looked at the assessment team, and of course, that's part of the teacher side, but it comes down to the assessment team that is actually working with and doing this. Top of the world is complete and this week, we started our first beginnings of our groups, which is exciting because that team time at our site is really exciting and I know Mr. Doug, your group is moving along quickly without, I just don't have a report from them. So, very, you know, people meshing and working together, very exciting.
Thank you. Do you have any representatives from the Roosters, PTA, School Power? Okay, there's some ones, so they're not here, so please. We're here for this.
Hi, I'm the reporter. I am the rep for School Power and I attended their first trustee meeting. We have lots of parent organizations and I'm really pleased to see a room full of parents that are engaged, want to help our schools. There's lots of new faces, which is really exciting. Dr. Laurie attended and Dr. Keller talked about the social emotional. So, I'll be attending those meetings and they're excited for the new year. They're starting their community campaign, but really positive energy in the room and they're all really engaged and it's really fun to see new faces engaged and care about our schools. Happy to represent that.
I did not have any reports. Good.
Yeah, and I attended the presentation of the Boys' Roosevelt for Cox and Mike Morrison also came and they have probably more Cox folks there. So, they're very excited and they had quite a bit of information from the person working for Boys' Roosevelt who's doing that room. They were able to, besides phone books, they were able to get a three D printer and then laser pens and so he shows them the things, some of the projects that could be done with us and they emphasized that they're trying to coordinate it so that students, when they get in our programs where they need to have the real computer skills that will have been so much loved and learned and using those so much instruction, that they will be working at a younger level to help them acquire those skills. So, to coordinate them and they were, it was very nice of reception.
I'll save my comments for my opening report.
Okay.
Hello, thank you. As Mrs. Water pointed out, all of the buildings have made it to top of the world. This was a very intense effort and thank you to Mr. Collin. He, we have to be very accommodating at our site when you have a large project like this and Mr. Zadeh did a fantastic job coordinating with the police department because these were very early morning hours and we have had zero incidents or reports or complaints, so kudos to them and it's nice to see the buildings go up.
Was it out there watching?
No, but it did go up that Saturday morning and they were like, what are you doing? I said, this is awesome.
They're beautiful.
Yes, so we had our DACA meeting today. It was a small but mighty group that attended. It also allowed us a lot of dialogue around how we can continue to reach out and support and so we have some ideas to continue to do that. I'd like to acknowledge Mike Morrison. He had carried that lead of the computer science committee today. He did a great job for their inaugural committee day. Michael Keller had his first social emotional support group during the school year. He spilled off of the work this summer, but they decided on a framework that they'd like to identify with and continue to work with, to represent the work in our district, so we're excited about that. And then finally, thank you to Margaret. Yes, our first CSCA after-school training is tomorrow. We're really excited about that and we appreciate the work and the staff.
I forgot. Moment here, my apologies. We have two timely letters that I'm going to send out as a superintendent of Lubbock Beach, not on the offensive school board, but simply as my role as superintendent. One is the supporting of the SB seven fifty-one, which you already, as a board, have already sent out your support. It is sitting on the governor's desk, I believe, waiting his signature. So, I will be sending out a letter to him tomorrow to recommend that he sign SB seven fifty-one, which is still the hill bill that was amended and so we're looking forward to, hopefully we'll sign that. That will then exempt basically districts from the reserve camp. The other letter that I plan to send out as the superintendent is a letter to the Honorable Dan Rohrbacher related to the Title II education funding, which is the federal funding that districts receive, that currently there's a difference of it being in the senate and the house have two very different education budgets and one has it pulled out. And for us, that would be a loss of approximately sixty-three thousand dollars, which we use every dime of it. It does help support a lot of the training that goes in to, for teachers specifically for that and we use it for that purpose. So, it is back in the house for the houses and having their joint discussion. So, the superintendents throughout Orange County met last Friday and many of them were sharing that they were going to be sending letters to recommend our local hospitalists engaging in that conversation, understand implications for their local areas. So, if you have any questions, again, I'll be sending them, you have the floor, that's what I'm sending.
I appreciate you doing that. I think it's important to have a voice and to encourage them to pay attention to issues in our context.
And in the future, I will try to bring them back in a timely fashion. Unfortunately, these things move so quickly when board meetings happen, I think, get them on the agenda to have you officially sign your names to those letters, it's more than just people care to validate. So, I will continue to find those opportunities and bring them to you as they arise.
Great, that's great. We're modeling for. Exactly, sitting in either.
Sitting in either.
Okay, my next item is our consent calendar. Are there any items that the board members would like to remove? Then I ask for a motion, please, for consent items A through N twelve. Any questions? Any public comment on the consent calendar? All is in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Here is my vote. We have confirmation items to the night versus a visitation on the golfing of the twenty seventeen eighteen school.
Well, welcome back, most excited. All right. Really great start. I think you heard that over and over again from staff, parents, students. Appreciate Labuba, CSCA, the positive comments. Almost getting to the end of this month, which is pretty amazing. I was just commenting that it's almost been October already. So, the year has been going by fast, but it's been, again, it's been a really nice start. And so, just wanted to revisit a few things. Some of you may have seen a little bit of this presentation at Coffee Talk. However, it's changed slightly in the prototype and later, but there's still some updates to it. So, again, our focus for this year is every student, every day. Continuous improvement, and relationships matter. We've seen that over and over again, I heard the principals talking about it. My son clearly knows about it as well. But it is our focus and I think it helps synthesize, as I mentioned previously, the vision and mission that we have in our district. And it helps us in the grander scheme of all the different things we have going on, stay focused. What, how are these decisions that we make fall into these categories? So, even our agendas at our principal's leadership meeting reflect these areas. So, how do decisions around any study reflect every student, every day? So, I will show you a few examples of some of that work and how it falls under here in a second. So, continuous improvement. Again, we don't change for the sake of change. We change to improve. And that means that our decisions are based off some research data and feedback that we receive from staff, from the community of areas that we need to constantly evolve and gap. And so, to that, again, as you are well aware, in July, you have the accelerated geometry course, which we have three sections, approximately a hundred students. AP Computer Science Principles, which is different than the AP Computer Comp Sci from the old, which is more geared towards AP Calculus. This is geared towards students who completed simple algebra, who are interested. We were amazed and as one of my former superintendents mentioned, our kids speak with their feet and they spoke with their feet very loudly that this was an interest and it's great and Miss Stanton's been doing a fantastic job. As you heard in Dr. Adipo's opening statement, Carrie's just been on it, been helping with the computer science K twelve and really wants to have well-prepared students coming her doorway at the high school level. I mean, it starts at the elementary level. The Electabill at Thurston, adding the strengths and work there. Again, our computer science scope and sequence. And we're always looking to evolve our CTE pathways. We've had a lot of ongoing conversations with potential opportunities for our students that we're hoping maybe we'll have some more opportunities in the spring, working and partnering with a local nonprofit. That I am hopeful that it'll be a marine area and I know we have some students that might be interested in that marine biology area. We're just trying to work with CCA to see if he made it up in building, so, and the facilities are. Full day kinder, which again, they don't seem as tired as they were in the first week. They're getting their stamina there. Was able to lock in with Member Brown and popped in and they were having their opportunity to kind of play a little bit. One group was outside, another group was reading and the teacher was also getting a break on the other. So, everybody's, you know, making their adjustments and but a lot of smiling faces. And I learned the W wave while I was there, so if you're ever interested, I'd show you. And last but not least, on the continuous improvement, the district volunteer process. Kudos to Ms. Winston and her staff and the school sites for helping make this, making this go really smoothly. Our parent groups for understanding the importance of why it is people need to be fingerprinted if they're going to be spending a lot of time with students. And I think so far, it's been a really smooth process, so much appreciation, great communication from the superintendent department. As we know, and I've been hearing a lot about this, both at the high school, back to school night, I had an opportunity to talk to a few parents. The focus on student attendance, staying proactive. And I've seen more students running out of this parking lot towards class when school starts than before. They don't want to be late. They know that it is important and we're holding them to that standard. You see it in our proactive policies, reaching out to families who aren't attending, whether it's a classified staff and offer an office or a assistant principal or principal, depending on the nature of the situation, reaching out, making those phone calls, trying to figure out what it may be keeping a student home after a certain amount of time. We are reviewing independent study process, as mentioned, and we will continue to do that to look at ways by which we can support our students who are out for an extended period of time, five days and more or potentially even longer. And so, each one of those situations requires a delicate balance of how do you provide that, especially at the high school level, when you think of all the challenges related to multiple classes and middle school. So, we are reworking with Ms. Carnan, the sites, Dr. Adipo and members of Labuba to figure out what is going to work, what's this policy and how is this process going to work? So, bringing everybody in so we can have an understanding of how do we keep our students up. Teaching and leading from strengths. Thurston Middle School has been doing this since last year. They're using it in their wheel, their electric wheel. We have other school sites that are looking to pilot it with their leadership team and obviously, as the board, you too part in that workshop as well, to get a little taste of that this, this last August. So, looking forward to that and as I mentioned to Principal Solberg, it's fun to think about students learning about themselves in a way that is not curriculum-driven, but really internal, which goes along with the next component of social learning implementation. Our goal of early identification and comprehensive student support is with Dr. Keller, student support specialist, and our use of Botkins, the second step, and we're looking again, as a continuous improvement effort, how do we adjust our second step curriculum to expand to meet our students' needs and evaluate what are we doing at the upper levels? Is Botkins the curriculum that we want to stick with? Are there other ways by which we believe we can meet more students and more need? Along with our health curriculum, we'll achieve this there. So, there's multiple layers to it. We are continuing to look at that and we'll continue to look at it over the next several months and have some recommendations as to what we plan on doing in the future. Our focus on relationships has always been one that I feel is important in the school district and I see it day in and day out at our school sites. We started with a lot of discussion around being no place for hate in school district, working with Anti-Defamation League, School Culture by Design with Phil Voight, our growth mindset with Carol Twett, Promise Talkman. There's a lot of examples of our schools, principals and classified staff and teachers focus on creating positive environments for learning. Research shows that that is one of the most important things for students in order to learn. They need to feel a positive environment. Our student leadership with Dr. Almond, he's been pushing that very heavily at the high school, having our students go and see model programs in other places. Something to strive towards, steps to get there. It doesn't work well when the principal says, this is exactly what you're going to do, but showing them an idea of how, what it can look like and how do we go about getting there and working with Mr. Finn, who's our new activities. Working through that process has been great. I watched the football game the other night and that middle section of students was, was well behaved. I even saw a canoe roll out there. Which was great to see, the students really engaged and cheering on their team and the boys on the field did a fantastic job, it was a tough, tough thing for them. So, the students continue to cheer them on, really positive, and that's what we like to see. And again, we're talking about possibly a student senate, working on that process. I know Dr. Almond's talking about that. We have student councils at our other school sites as well. And again, getting our students involved, as Chairman Perry mentioned, around civics and engaging and as Member Brown also mentioned, is really important in how do we provide those opportunities for our students while they're in the school setting so that when they go on into post-secondary wherever they decide to go, they have that background in their, in their back pocket. Our current enrollment, this was as of yesterday, it changes a little bit every day. We've, we're actually up a little bit more than I had at the, when I first did this slide, which was last week. So, again, it changes a little bit here and there. On the left, you can see our projections and on the right, you can see our current enrollment. We are a little down in a couple of spots. Nothing to be alarmed about. I think for the first time at Thurston, we're actually over projected, which is, is good. We're getting closer to that number, which is, again, is always a challenge for us. We know we have a number of students who live in the school district, but come to us at middle school, which is testament to the work that we have going on. And Almaro, we have to, we have to adjust our numbers. We have a large number of students moving. However, we also, our projections of five eighteen did not factor in the end of year enrollment and the low enrollment numbers at the beginning of last year. So, we have to make some adjustments to our, to our projections, which we will bring back to you in October. Once C-Vets goes in, we'll be able to work a decision inside to determine what the obvious will continue to look like. So, twenty-nine thirty-two, right around, a little shy of what we were hoping for, but again, we're poised, I believe, to adjust pretty well to any fluctuations moving forward through growth or attrition, depending on what we need to do. So, to give you a little bit of a picture of that, you can see, I apologize, the digress in front of you as well, but on the left, the light blue is the projection that we had on the books with our current enrollment and over time, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, you can see we were at a little over three thousand. We've stepped down, but we've stepped down slowly and that's important for us to be able to adjust accordingly. So, we will see this step down, the cohort sizes are the ones that are a bit more concerning. Over time, the current class average in K three cohort average, I believe, is one hundred and fifty-nine students approximately. Again, factoring kinder is always a little bit lower. And our current four through eight cohorts are two hundred and thirty-four. So, there is a bit of a difference as those cohorts will come through. We do grow every year. Our, our data shows that we grow every year by a little over a hundred and two percent, depending on the grade level. However, even at that growth, the cohorts are not going to be at two hundred and thirty-four moving forward. So, we are watching, monitoring. So we are watching, monitoring, making sure that we provide the board with enough information, be proactive in any decision related to building, expanding whatever we need to do facilities-wise in the long term. So we will continue that and we will again, as I said, adjust the October Cbeds. Real quickly, you didn't see this, this is the cash results for 2017, they're in Margarita till tomorrow morning. But we do have an update for you that we will be providing to the board at the next board meeting. But we have areas of growth, areas that we focused on, some areas where we remain relatively stable and some areas that we really want to focus on. So again, it'll be forthcoming, but the data is essentially important till tomorrow for the rest of the case. Highlights that I really wanted to point out this year. The passage rate for advanced placement tests have gone up as well as the total number of students participating, which is a great sign. When you see more students participating and a higher passage rate, great things going on in our classrooms. You will see another jump in the total number of students taking the AP tests as a result of our additional AP computer classes. So our hope is our students will take that test and continue to do really well, as our students have traditionally done well. And those of the APs have been taken at a 92% pass rate, that's a very high pass rate for the county. Thirty percent of our students took, in 10-12, took and passed an AP test, which is great. The ACT is again, as I mentioned previously, seems to be the test of the day that was taken over. And again, we're above the state average and doing well within the county as well. Ninety-four percent of our students are ready for college-level coursework in ELA, of those who took the ACT. And that is, that's different than what you may find in other districts and what you may be hearing or seeing in the national data. Our students are ready to go in and take college-level classes. Ninety-four percent of English is pretty impressive, 70%, 77% in college algebra and social science and 70% in biology compared with 46% of the state average. So well done on the state, continuing as areas for us to grow. We will be looking at, as we know, at the NGSS pathway at the high school level. And this could provide us an opportunity for us to look and see, is there a deficiency that we could address within our own pathway? UC eligibility has increased from the previous year, we're up. Again, a big focus at the councils at the tail end of last year, as we were looking at our data and our help cap goals, finding why it is that students aren't eligible, making sure that we're coding classes correctly, that students take on the outside, because it is an accountability measure for us. So if a student takes the UC eligibility class outside, but doesn't tell us about it or bring it back for graduation, we need to make sure we call and ask them, did you take this class so that we can then get the transfer posted? Because they don't necessarily need to do it, we need it for our data, so we'll be being much more proactive in those areas. Our focus in instruction, as has been mentioned by Dr. Odepo and as you saw tonight, inquiry, inquiry, inquiry. The NGSS science and ensuring practices and pathways that we'll be presenting to you at some point this fall. Instructional shift with Irvine Math Project, continuing our work with Irvine Math Project. And our universal screeners for SB 13-169. Curriculum, ELA, ELD, we're in the throes of that. We, as Dr. Odepo mentioned, some of this curriculum has been very hybrid. So there's a lot of technology that goes into it. We are being reminded on an everyday basis that the textbook companies are not tech companies. They are publishers by nature and so their tech programming is not nearly as robust as we would hope it would be. I believe we'll just give an hour of time till they start to add and enhance what they have in terms of support. We are figuring and working with them, working with surrounding districts to explain our concerns we have with their programming and that they need to be a little bit more user-friendly at times. So I appreciate Mike Morrison and Roy and the work they're doing. There's so much work that goes into the backend of getting these programs up and running. And then when they fail because of the publisher, a lot of work has been done and I appreciate the principals kind of keeping everything moving along as we adjust to these challenges. But so far, you know, having two students that are involved in it, I feel that it's been great. Both my students enjoy the curriculum, their exposure so far and I've heard from other campuses as well. The history of social science will be forthcoming and we will be looking at the NGSS curriculum that's on the teachable board as well. And you're seeing a little bit of a shift in many ways where many school districts are looking to create their own blended curriculum and realizing there's different pockets of good stuff out there, that it wouldn't be necessarily a whole textbook that you may have seen in the past and the publishers are trying to adjust to that. Where they're getting, they're letting districts pick and choose different things that they may want within their curriculum and almost have their own reader of college, for example, that you may purchase. Where it's not just a giant textbook and that allows us to adjust and change over time. So publishers are adjusting, which is great. And last but certainly not least, the social emotional support and creating a real broad-based support for MTSS, our whole applied tier system intervention support. I have to give kudos to the principals and to the instructional services department for our first two days. Phil Boyd and his staff led site-by-site work on developing positive school culture. One of the quotes that really stood out to me was Phil's quote, that positive school culture is built on relationships that are dependent on trust, which is carried out through vision and grows, that grows community and is sustained through habits. Culture is not something that happens overnight, it happens over time. And as you heard Piper speaking about it, every day, there's a constant emphasis on the positive school culture. That's what they're saying at the high school and I know that's happening at all the other school sites as well, so. And the professional development day two, as has been echoed by both the movement and CSTA staff, was very focused and targeted on what the needs were of the individual teachers in those different grade levels. Whether it was ELA, ELD adoption, the work through that, our reading specialist and the work that was going on with our special ed staff. So kudos to again, instructional services department for an amazing amount of logistics. Rooms moving everywhere, what's going on, so a great job. With that, short little PD video, a lot of smiling faces, which is great to see. As related to the social emotional supports, it's really about our way of doing things and it's our way of meeting the needs of all of our students where their needs are. Making it integrated, it's not one more thing, it is part of what we do every day. And to accomplish that, and I think former Rickard, he had mentioned, the shared language around social science, there needs to be shared language around social emotional. And it's not just a program for a student who might be in crisis, it's really for all students to learn to navigate the challenges that they'll face in their lives. Because we all know that as adults, we've all faced challenges in our lives. And these are all great strategies for us to overcome those challenges, for us to meet them head-on or for us to find help when we need some support to accomplish that as well. And really try to figure out what is the right intervention that a student needs and not to throw the kitchen sink proverbially at somebody, but to determine what does that student need right now that we can provide and not, not having that is, I think, why we are where we're at now, is we realized we needed to have additional support for our students in this area. Our student support specialists will tell you they're very, very busy, which is great to hear in some ways, but also a reminder that they were needed. And they're out in classrooms, they're presenting in classrooms, they're also meeting with individual students and resourcing. And I'm just very pleased to see and we'll have an update for you as we get closer to the wintertime, some of the work that's been going on in those areas specifically. This is a quote that Dr. Keller provided that I think does sum up our work around social emotional, that mission of life is not really to survive, but to thrive and to do so with some passion, some compassion, some humor and some style. We have been busy and Ryan jumped, Ryan Zeta jumped in, both feet, both hands, everything. It was a busy, busy time when he came on in July. The modular buildings, as I've been mentioning, are onsite, amazing process to get that accomplished. Our force yield across, classrooms are top of the world. Just a lot of general things that make our campuses look the way they should and well-kept. And it is, it's great to see and again, as I mentioned, the coffee talk. The synthetic turf, I think of Island, is just a hit of the kids. Probably the best thing you've done there forever, if you have some of them, to go along with the synthetic turf, I can play around with, which they commonly still. So you just see kids laying, you know, just sprawled out, so. And not so sexy, but the HIV, our HIV, the HVAC ratings, work that we've done, that kids aren't so interested in, even though the air conditioning, I can tell you the teachers for that too. Elmoreau, they covered walkway roofing. We've had a lot of challenges there with water intrusion that we wanted to address before the rainy season. Again, being proactive so that we don't end up with larger challenges down the line. The sewer pump replacement, again, thank you for the plumber that the board approved. We have kept him very busy. As I think one person mentioned, it sounded like gravel in the sewer pump, which is not what they're supposed to sound like. One, it was a double pump system, one was already dead and was no longer functioning, the other was on life support. And we all know that we would never have wanted to have to deal with that if it was to not work anymore. So being proactive, getting that done, that was a massive, massive project, so Peter has been great. And the door hardware replacements, really in the painting of the doors, really makes the campus stand out again. A lot of those doors get a lot of sun and weather all day long and they are protecting things, mechanical units, so on and so forth that are hidden there. Business facilities, Thurston, we have the roofing, again, door hardware replacements, glass and window trim replacements. And always a nice thing to do prior to the start of the year, is get the gym floor resurfaced. And really brings out the shine and it brings out blood pride in the, in the school, I think. When you walk around that campus, students realize they're in a very unlucky place. It's very clean, well-kept, everything's functioning and working really well. So I very appreciated the work that's going on at Thurston. The high school has been just a busy, busy place, continues to be one where we are continuing to work on our, wrapping up a lot of our work there. Again, lots of water intrusion, lots of proactive work there. Point out to the bottom right-hand corner, you can see a before and after of the lack of drainage in the beginning, which created a lake right out, you can find a lot of the classrooms there. That was addressed, we were able to brightsize the drainage pipe there and get that accomplished. So no longer will it help students exiting classroom during the rainy season to a giant lake of water. And as has been mentioned, we've been very busy in HR. I will show you a slide at the beginning here of all the names of all these folks that we hired, it's quite an impressive list. But just to orient all of you with some of the new faces we have on our campuses, at least put together a little bit here. And just to give you some context, this is just those that were hired over the summer. This is not even the people that we hired necessarily in the tail end of last year. So this is, this is why it's hard for our HR department to get any vacation during the summer time. Because this is the amount of work that is building and it's not just HR, other departments are involved. As you can see, a lot of instructional assistants, special education, regional care staff. So we, this list is similar to what we had last year as well, we have a lot of new faces, we have a lot of, we have some people retiring, we have people who have found additional jobs, people who are instructional leads by teaching jobs, which is great. We have probably some of the most amazing instructional assistants in the county in terms of their education and their ability levels. And when Margaret talks about all the support that we can provide them to grow as educators and support our students as well in classroom. So again, thank you to all of my staff for making this year a great start. I can't believe it's already October and we're well on our way. But, and thank you to the board for allowing us the opportunity to do all those amusing things. For contracts that you've passed over the summer, for different speakers we brought in. You allowed us to make this a great place to start the year, so definitely, questions?
It's not really doing, performative and thorough and it's going well. That's what we need, it has to be the slot campaigns and bowling, so they can't get you, right?
Right, no cell service.
She said no cell, no cell service.
I sincerely really do appreciate so much information. I think it's really, really helpful for us to have that for our relationships with the greater community so that we are well-formed and know that we have the community can respond with good knowledge. Now we move to our next information item, a lengthy financial update, Jim.
Thank you, President Bakers. There is not a lot of fiscal activity that happens through the month blockage, which is why you see this is fairly limited in what's being reported. So we have a little less than 2% of our revenues come in and our expenditures are primarily focused on the facility improvements. So you'll see that in our support services and that has to do with a lot of our technology purchases and the maintenance projects that occur over summer to get us ready for school. And then of course, you have coaching supplies, this is all the starting school supplies. So you'll see that all reflected on the first page, that's why you see all the percentages are very low, but that is as expected. The next page, you see how it is changed within our adopted, 2017-18 adopted budget. So until we come back with our first outcome to reflect the changes in the budget itself with the total compensation increases, this will be made safe. And then of course, you get into our special funds and their fund balances. And I will highlight that. And I will highlight that later tonight, we'll talk about the reserve policy and we'll address the Fund 17 and Fund 40 at that time. And the last bit of information in the financial update is you'll see our 5000s in terms of object code, that's your services and other operating expenditures. That's where the bulk of the expenses happen in summer, and that's why it's reported. If you have to take any questions.
I also appreciate that you're always putting the helpers' information.
Yes, and I should highlight, we've gotten some pretty good investment returns on that, so, and that's as of the end of July, so that's fairly recent, according to the reporting on that.
Any questions? I did ask for any public comment or questions, I don't think so. Just don't say anything, so. Okay, now we move to our action items this evening. Our first approval of proclamation September as attendance awareness month.
As the item says, it's, it is attendance awareness month. And districts throughout the United States are reminding all of our families of the importance of being in school. So we're recommending that our school district and school board proclaim that September's attendance awareness month. And importantly, part of what we do is have kids in schools, so be mindful of that. So I don't know that you want to read all the whereas's, but if you want to, I'll do it.
Okay, well, of course, I'll ask if there's any public comments. Any more questions? So a motion please, someone. Here's Carol, and I'll read some of this. Whereas good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Whereas chronic absence, missing 10% of more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused, or just two or three days a month, is a predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. Whereas attendance gaps among groups of students often turn into achievement gaps that undermine student success. Chronic absence particularly exacerbates the achievement gap that separates low-income students from their peers. Since students from low-income families are more likely to be chronically absent and more likely to be affected academically by missing school. And I'll skip down. Whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, families, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Word of education, the Connecticut Unified Department claims September's attendance awareness month. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. I've heard this already this year, I heard it discussed at the LMO PTA, and I think it's like, when we talk about these other things, the more we keep bringing things up over and over and over again, I think it will help us get the message out. But when you see, to me, when you see the presentation we saw tonight, it, it makes it even more critical that students are in class. Because it isn't, they can't just now go home and read that chapter in the textbook and get it all. They're really going to miss significant instruction. And not only instruction of facts, but it, but how they learn to learn, which is what we're, is that change, so. That's my little speech, but I, it's, I, I was so surprised to see where we were with attendance and that we really need to address it. So I think it's, I know our, our staff, the leaders, will appreciate this in particular.
You know, I spoke, just kidding around with some students from high school, and at the beginning of school, it's like, oh, the biggest change is the attendance. Oh, they're really serious, so that's good.
Mr. Blumberg, can you give every class a explain? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, here's Tybo. Next, approval of resolution number 1721, support for national vote for the movement.
So as we do every year, and I think it's an important reminder for, for all of us, that our goal is to support the right of students and staff to attend schools that are safe and free from violence, harassment, bullying, discrimination. And that as, as such, we need to provide a safe learning environment for all of our students and staff included. Or we are recommending that the Board of Education support this resolution, which is kind of a reminder to us of the work that we need to do again in our schools around relationships and partnerships.
Other comments? More questions? Motion please.
Second. New board discussion. I assume all have, the school department have some specific activities, they have, they have, they have some no-place-for-hate activities.
Right, so, so far this year, the no-place-for-hate, a lot of those activities that they're doing are in line with, with the anti-holding. I know that the elementaries have already done some pledges, the no-place-for-hate pledges around respect. And there's the United in Kindness, a variety of activities are going on, so.
I think, I think no-place-for-hate takes us to a different level and really gives us more work. So I, I think it may be more meaningful to students, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, here's Tybo. Next is approval of Mosaic Network, Inc., co-vitality app contract for 2017-18 school year.
Thank you. So in line with our commitment to every student, every day, we want to identify students, not every day, but every student around identifying risk factors for students with social emotional problems. So Dr. Keller and a group of thoughtful individuals identified the Mosaic network as the set of screeners that we were meant to use. The K3 is free, 412 is the purchased item. We ask for your permission in initiating work with them, provided that staff is able to negotiate a contract.
Public comment? Motion? Board discussion?
I'll bet you got something that's useful and we can use moving forward.
This is the program that was developed in UC Santa Barbara, right?
Yes, okay. Co-vitality, yes, app.
Yes, was this part of the survey that just went out today? I know, that's what I said, I just wanted to ensure it was like a, something to kind of postulate for this, social emotional.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, here's Tybo. Next is approval of a memorandum of understanding between college and career advantage and the Connecticut Unified School District to employ district and CCA teachers to offer effective courses at the Connecticut High School during the 2017-18 school year.
Thank you, this is similar to the agreement that we engaged with last year, that it acknowledges the courses and the partnership between CCA and LMS.
Other comment? More questions? Motion please, another second. Board discussion?
Just near this step, we had information about three of the employees, but not about emergency medical responder program in coding, unless maybe I just missed that.
That is CCA, that is CCA instructor.
These are just the ones.
That's ours.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, here's Tybo. Our next action item is approval of an independent contractor agreement with thinking maps for path proficiency for English language learners teacher training. And about how to save 13,000 children's life goals.
Yes, so thank you for this, I appreciate your consideration. We held this training last year for our teachers, they reported it was the best training, English learner training they've received, and they made commitments to go back and bring it back, recommend colleagues come back. So since they've recommended this to their colleagues, we would like to provide the opportunity for their colleagues to be trained.
Thank you. Public comment? More questions?
At some point, will we have somebody trained in thinking maps that can do trainings for teachers?
Yes.
Or will we always have to send?
No, thank you for that question. This is a particular kind of language development that you, it's designed to use thinking maps as the framework and then identify the language skills that build using thinking maps. So this particular trainer is outstanding. However, to your point, we have several thinking map trainers in the district that we have engaged with, but this path proficiency is a, is a specialized strand of thinking maps. So yes, but not in this area.
Okay, perfect. Let's do it again, to her question, we have had some of our staff do training, and other staff haven't been.
That is correct. It's a one-day training, that typically is a one-day training.
Here, have a motion, someone? Second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, here's Tybo. Next, action item, approval of fiscal crisis and management assistance team pick map study agreement for special education review for a cost not to exceed 40,000.
Thank you, President Vickers. Please don't be scared of the name.
That's exactly.
This is not a fiscal crisis item at all. In fact, this is coinciding with, as Dr. Gori mentioned, one of our themes this year, which is continuous improvement. So this is a proactive study that we want done with our special education services, but it covers more than just that. You'll notice on the scope items, number 10, they're even looking at our district's general fund and how much we contribute to see if there's any improved efficiencies to fiscal services. So this is us trying to get a handle on, we have a really wonderful program, we know that, that are there ways to improve it. And pick map commonly performs these studies for other school districts. In fact, many of our neighboring districts have had these types of studies with pick map, and they bring in a statewide perspective as they analyze all the districts throughout the state. So they'll give us more of a broader view of what may be ways that we can improve. If your approval is not to exceed the fee of 40,000, we will have the study performed likely in the beginning of December. And then whatever recommendations come out of that study or the report, we will have that on later time in six to seven.
Other comment?
And more questions? Just, so this is a state, a state group?
Yes, third, third part is the state that.
So created in 1992, so.
Yes.
So they just consider that, that, that this is all they do, it's just a crisis kind of break it off.
Well, when districts do get into financial troubles, they will come in, and it's when you don't invite them, you don't want to see them.
Right.
We are.
Got it.
They come in, they, yeah, they come into several districts during the recession.
That's why I was.
To help them address the opportunities.
So this is a specialized business that we are, so you might ask me that.
We're, yeah, we called that, that, no.
That's why, I mean, I just wanted to make sure, it was a specialized business?
Yes.
Thank you. Have they always been called the crisis?
Yes. And they perform a variety of functions, sometimes a special education review, they've done technology reviews in other districts, resources, business services reviews. So they rely on experts, both retired and current, whether in special ed, for example, we could have retired directors of special education as well as business people who may not be retired, who may be currently practicing, as well as current practicing directors of special ed or self-directed directors that may be. They bring in a full team and they do a full scope interviewing, they look at the data behind all of the different, whether it's numbers, statistics, identification and processes. So you can see, one, about our, our processes, our MTSS, RTI. So they will look at that, they'll interview people, they better understand are the deficiencies that we're not seeing. Sometimes when you're in it, it can be harder to see it having an external set of eyes, and all of the recommendations are, none are binding. So they're simply, from our perspective, we think you can do this differently and you may provide for the deficiencies, so.
It's a, it's a first, first discussion. So our cohort says they will help us find a better way to serve our students for lessons.
Just to be efficient, so are we, do we have systems in place to identify the right students for their, for their needs? We have systems for that, but again, bringing in an outside set of eyes, they may say, well, you're, you can do this instead, or here's some other opportunities for you to look at. So there are some monetary efficiencies, there's also staff efficiencies that we're trying to evaluate, whether it's, staff time is also part of being efficient. So, and staffing ratios, so what, are we, are we meeting the needs of all of our students with the current staff that we have? Or do we need to reallocate and move staff reporting and create some efficiencies there as well, so.
Oh, question for someone, second. I think that it is a little off-putting with that item, actually. If you read this, provide proactive and preventive fiscal business and management services. So it's, maybe they could, maybe they could change part of their.
I recommend that we do that.
But I also, we've been hearing for several years are, that our specialized student population is growing.
Yeah.
And there's been a sort of about that, concern about the reasons for that and how it impacts our district. So I think, I think that I understand there's a real interest in getting this outside look to see if there's any other approaches that we can take. I like that.
They're coming from all of us, they have all different fruits of the, who kind of get stuck into.
Well, it's things that we're meant to do, just to make sure that we are doing this, yeah.
Any other board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, here's Tybo. Our next action item is approval, review board policy by actions with Jeff.
Thank you, President Vickers. This is per board policy 3001, we're supposed to bring this back for review each September. At this time, staff is not recommending any changes to that board policy. The only thing that I would like to highlight with our board policy is that what we will be proposing to with the first interim is to take the Alisa property reserve, the amount that we typically forward to the general fund, and allocate that to Fund 17 to increase our risk rate calculation. Not increase calculation, but increase Fund 17 so that we're not falling any further.
Other comment? More questions? More motion please, someone?
Your mind was. Kaka, I guess that's what it is.
Well, it is, we're, we're moving, keeping the policy as it is, and then you have to hear a problem, so is that, any more discussion? I'm glad I could totally have that, Alisa property.
Yes. Definitely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, here's Mary, and this last item is board member request, items for future meetings, request for information, general comment.
I just, I shared most likely from coffee talks back to school, I had to tell them very positive. And there's like a change, an increase in pride and an increase in intentionality of what it means to addition. But, but there's a connection, I think your parents want, oh, they're doing this for this reason, and why are they doing it? And that's, that's amazing, it's an amazing shift from questions to statements, from parents sharing experiences with one day, I don't know. Did it pop in more or worse? Because the communication is better, in a sense, that parents were very informed, which not all in the board. And end up with more questions, they were sharing scores and, and I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't. So that's interesting, can you just talk about the district and social positive thoughts?
I did tour Elmore, which was very, very fun, and also I got wrapped up. And I didn't come back as a creeper, so that was good. And then I did actually go and watch those modulars getting delivered, not, not at 2:00 in the morning, but it was really, it was really kind of cool, so, yeah.
A lot of work.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, and they were very serious, so I stayed another way, I was, and then, then I was up. It's good, thank you. I heard lots and lots of positive comments too, especially about the accelerated geometry class, about the AP computer class, thanking us for having those, all, all good bits. I just wanted to comment briefly, when I went to the elementary school back in school, I, it could have been open house. And I think, and I heard several comments from parents about that, that there's all the, and they were early, they were early this year. All the work that was already on display, and the presentations by teachers were really comprehensive and supportive. So I think it's, they're doing a great job. Wanted to compliment all of our presenters at the coffee talk. Because again, it was like your presentation, that's so much information, parents see a lot of information about what we're doing and about our facilities, about our special education. And I think it's really, really valuable that they receive that information. At the Elmore PTA, they had a presentation on the Raptor, and it's so positively accepted, I mean, there's nobody's question that, yeah, in fact, the only question I think was from our parents that wanted to know how they would get it updated, another.
In other words, so like, they approve someone and then they become a creeper. And so, you know, they'll say that, and it went to the database, I mean, we would know that.
I think it's one, yeah.
Yeah, it's one, so that seemed, I mean, that was the only concern, was that it would just be static. And, but it's very well received. I'm sure you all read that about the Top of the World 50 Year Celebration coming up. And I thought it was interesting that they started with just two classrooms ready and over 500 kids and, and the older purpose room. But it was, I don't know, didn't know Al Haven would be next. Same with Dursman started, people were coming from other areas, other states to look at these schools and see the different way of teaching and it, it just made me think too, that then the whole Terry Huston was coming there and Sarah Rosie and the Ching Ching. And so we are continuously improving, but some things, like it's true.
Things were good, yeah.
And some didn't work. They weren't, they didn't. And then I was just curious with the information you gave us in the update, when, when will we have the opportunity to call it, let's get this question about the contracts? And you gave us information, so what's the next step?
So the next step will be a recommendation for me at some point as to what that may look like. I'm currently in the process of pulling together some of the different contract ideas that are being used throughout the county. And then it will be, I'll bring back my recommendation to the board at some point.
I should be able to preach about this.
No, 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 actually, we're talking about, we're talking about today. So this person was gathering a bunch of different samples from surrounding districts for assistance of container contracts that currently are in existence. And I will bring that back and my role is to pretend to, to the board as, for action.
And I would, one last observation, it is really impressive how our sites look. And I, it made me think tonight, I used to hear my father say, when you take the car into, for the mechanical work, you need to have it cleaned inside out because they'll take their carrier car. And I think we send a real message to our students that when they come to our schools and they look as good as they do, that it has to be subliminal. I mean, they have to be getting that message of how much we care about them through the respect we have for our students. So it's, it's, it's a lot of work, we need all those slides in summer and it's expensive work. But it, it really is necessary, it's necessary because it gives them a sense of how much we respect them coming to us to get education. And it's, so it's good, but it's, it's a big, big job. Thank you. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October 10th at 6:00 here in War Room. We have a special meeting, policy workshop on Friday, October 6th at 8:30. And a motion for chairman, some of us, second.
Yeah, she knows, she's got it. You said Peggy a lot. I know, she's like an awesome person.